We will speak if we get a chance. Are they going to let us speak tonight?
Yeah.
Because that's what we're doing. So we'll start with a call to order and if you would all rise and join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Chair Wolf.
Here.
Vice Chair Roby.
Here.
Member Friend.
Yes.
Member List.
Here.
Member Lowery.
Here. We move on to the consent calendar, including the agenda for tonight and minutes from our last meeting. Is there any discussion or desire to pull any items from the consent calendar?
Move to adopted.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. So the next item, we're up to item three on the published agenda. This is items of interest to the public to address the planning commission. This is your opportunity to talk, to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda tonight and we're, you know, in the public communication portion, we actually can't take action on anything that you bring up, but this is your opportunity to address the planning commission. If there's anybody who would like to do so, there's the podium.
Can we draw it out on the agenda for that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Some time ago, you had occasion to consider the city plan related to structures being built in the town and I was here and made a comment about the list of trees, some of which were not indigenous and were troublesome, like the Ginkgo tree. And I remember, if my memory is correct, a couple of you concurred and I believe you, Mr. Wolf, had suggested that the staff call those out. So I was surprised at the city council meeting when that was included. So my suggestion is you might at some point give some consideration to how you forward your recommendations to the city council. It's just natural that people will perceive things differently, but that wound up in there. And then what we learned at the, at the city council meeting is that that was in there because a particular group had come up with a list and concluded that it was appropriate. But, and that only the Ginkgo tree that's female causes the problem. But as the literature shows, experts can't tell between the male and female Ginkgo tree and then until it's mature, that's about 16 years and by then it's too late because you've got a big tree. And I swear, from personal experience, it smells like dog manure. And, and then just like that subject, you track it in all over. So we're going to have that in the city. And again, the same group or some of the same people who, with well intentions, said that the In-N-Out Burger could not have the iconoclastic signs of the palm trees and then reporters came in with TV crews as they're shown photographs of how we had palm trees in front of the courthouse, among other places. And then the same group has said that the cork oak that's in the Ivy House parking lot is not indigenous or not historic. Obviously, it doesn't go back to the Gold Rush, but cork oak was here in the Gold Rush era. Pearson Soda Works across the street used corks. Bottled water from Shears, Pearson's, and Tolman was very important because in those days, water was dangerous, had a lot of pathogens in it. So the irony is that that actually is historic. You peel off the bark every seven years and use a stamp and get your corks. They didn't go import them from France. So somehow, whatever's communicated here doesn't always get forward onto the other place and you might give some ideas at some point to how to kind of formalize the process so that the comments made here, if they're of any value to you, do get used. If you ever want to know about corks, let me know.
Kathy Lishman, Community Pride. I'm not sure what group he's talking about. And he talked about three different things and it sounds like he's blaming it on Community Pride, but Community Pride didn't have much to do with that except to create the plant list for the, for the development guide. And according to people who are landscapers, definitely the Ginkgo tree that, you know, one is bad and one is good. And I'm sure they can figure out which one it is.
Anyone else for the public comments section? All right. Thank you for sharing, everyone. We'll move on to any oral or written communication for the commission.
Yeah, the city, the city did receive two communications regarding item four of tonight's agenda, the text amendment requests regarding the keeping of chickens within the city. And so those were provided to you by Director Rivas who made copies for you for tonight's presentation. Also, I also want to alert you to the fact that the, there is a copy of the development guide which is passed out to you. It's not on the agenda tonight. It is the adopted version that council recently approved. So now that you have that for your, for your records and you can use to evaluate future projects. That concludes, well, unless you have additional comment.
Just one last comment, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to alert the commission that the Ginkgo tree issue is no longer an issue. It has been removed from the adopted design guidelines.
And I just, I do want to follow up. I mentioned there were two comments. The comments received were from Kirk Smith and from Karen Ray. So those should be part of your, and it is part of the public record.
Thank you. We'll move, we'll move on to open the public hearing for tonight's item. The first item, item four, is proposed a zone change, or change to zoning ordinance. And the, it's the City of Placerville staff request for the planning commission to consider and make recommendations to the city council regarding proposed text amendments to the city's zoning code, allowing the keeping of up to four hen chickens in single-family residential zones within the city of Placerville. And the commission's role on this item is to hear public comment regarding this request and then make a recommendation to the city council on the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. So I guess we'll, we'll begin with a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Just to give a little history about the ordinance, the draft, keeping of hen chickens ordinance was first considered by the planning commission back in September 1st of last year. Staff has considered comments received from that public meeting and comments received to date. The draft ordinance is provided as Exhibit A in the staff report. Any modifications from that version of the ordinance first considered by the commission is shown with underlined and strikeout. Some background, the keeping of chickens is currently not permitted within the city limits on residentially zoned parcels, with the exception of the estate residential zone, which allows for agricultural uses such as raising, grazing of livestock, poultry and other animals, and also the single-family residential acre, R1A district, which also allows for the raising of crops, fruits, and keeping of animals, including up to two hoofed animals such as horses and cows, et cetera. Staff is aware that a number of residential properties within the city currently harbor chickens, both hens and roosters, and, and within those zone, residentially zoned districts are currently in violation of the code. It is staff's opinion that the allowing, allowing for the keeping of hen chickens on residentially zoned properties will give residents the opportunity to provide a local sustainable food source for themselves, to allow for the children of families to engage in 4H or animal husbandry projects. The keeping of chickens has become very commonplace in many cities in California and many of them have also amended their codes to allow for the keeping of chicken hens. In the review of complaints made by residents, the issue is primarily focused on excessive noise from the crowing of roosters, but other concerns that have been expressed since our past public meeting included clarification of setbacks, chicken coop construction standards, consideration of the number of chickens that may be kept, and the visibility from a public street. The first draft has been modified in response to these comments and staff is recommending that if it's a desire of the commission, that you could consider raising the maximum number of hen chickens to either five or six. And just, and just for further information, staff has reviewed the ordinances from a number of different cities. These include City of Albany, Benicia, Chico, Davis, El Cerrito, Fremont, City of Sacramento, County of Sacramento, San Diego, San Luis Obispo, San Francisco, and the City of Woodland, just to name a few. So with that, staff would request that you conduct a public hearing to receive any additional public comment regarding the draft ordinance and then make a recommendation to the city council to approve the text amendments that would be to Title 10, which is the Placerville zoning ordinance, Chapter 4, which is the general regulations section, which would then add 10-4-18 of the zoning ordinance to regulate the keeping of hen chickens. That concludes staff's report. I'll answer any questions you have at this time.
Any questions from the commission for staff at this time?
Just a couple of comments, if I may. The first item in paragraph B on the draft ordinance, in the, about the last line, it says, it's talking about the exemptions. This is strictly editorial comment. It says, unless subject to the exemptions, I'm not sure that's the correct word you want to use there. Permit, permit it in accordance with, or something along those lines. To me, it just didn't read right. While I'm on that section, is this the section that you would base a prohibition for roosters on? There's no other, there's no other indication in the ordinance regarding roosters and it seems to me that if we're going to do that, I would think we should have it in one other area, probably under D development standards for emphasis. To me, it's, it kind of got lost because it was tied in with, with the exemption, so...
Staff would agree with that. In fact, my comment to your comment basically would be D1, where we state a maximum of four chicken, hen chickens may be kept on a developed lot, used exclusively for residential purposes. And then we also add in and provide it further that the keeping of hen chickens shall not create a health or nuisance problem. That was based on some of the reviews staff had with other city ordinances. And, and you're right, a lot of the other city ordinances, that is, it was in, within that section that they prohibit roosters, so we can certainly add that in that section.
We haven't gotten to that part, but if the commission, that's where...
Right. That would, that would make perfect sense to...
Under, thank you, under D2C, enclosure shall be a minimum of 25 square foot. What about maximum?
That's just the minimum allowed and so we don't really have a maximum. A maximum then, if they, if any structure exceeds 120 square feet, then it's subject to a building permit and all the setback requirements and development standards under the, under the zone district.
Right. So, but, so we're just asking that we're comfortable with a chicken coop of 1,000, 1,200, 1,200 square feet? I'm just, just...
Let's just say I, yeah, staff's, staff's only comment would, would be that the, the size of the chicken coop would be commensurate with the number of chickens somebody's keeping on their property. So staff doesn't envision somebody building a 1,200 square foot, which is your typical single-family dwelling, to house four chickens. But if they were to come in with a 1,200 square foot chicken coop, well, they're, you know, hopefully they're coming in with a conditional use permit to increase the number of chickens they're proposing to keep on their lot.
Okay.
And so, under the conditional use permit process, then that would come before the commission and then we would regulate in terms of how big it can be, how many, number of chickens they would keep based on the size of the lot, proximity to neighbors, all those different parameters we would look at under that process.
All right. Well, I'll only offer for, for discussion when it comes back, that if we're, if we set a maximum number of chickens permitted, then it seems we could, we should also be able to set a maximum size on, on a coop, but that's, that's for debate amongst the commissions. Thank you. No further.
In a moment, I'm going to open the public hearing on this item and we'll, we'll hear from the public. And this is one of those items that, based on the, on the past discussions here, it's one of those issues that where people have strong opinions and a lot of times, strong opinions are accompanied by strong emotions. But I would just ask everybody that we remain respectful and civil as we go through this and please follow our rules about not shouting out and laughing too much and, and that kind of stuff. So, because, and I would, I want to apologize in advance, the last time we considered this, I made a few too many chicken jokes and so tonight, we'd like to have a moratorium on the, on the chicken jokes because it's so easy to do. But we want to, you know, it's, it's serious business, but we always don't have to take it too seriously. But in that spirit, let's be kind to one another and we'll open the public hearing. And as the chair, it's my job to set time limits. I'll kind of keep it open. I want everybody to have, have their time. If, if you're coming up and you agree with the same person that just talked about, talked for several minutes, just tell us, you need to just tell us you agree with them rather than repeating all the, all the items, please. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and the podium is available. This isn't like a normal item where there's proponents and opponents, so we'll just, probably what, you know, I'd like to do is, let's have everybody that's for this ordinance, would you go ahead and speak first and then if you have other opinions, we'll come after that. So those in favor, here's the podium.
We have five hens at the moment and one rooster who's subject right now to being assassinated if he is removed, the way I see it. And that's my chicken joke, basically, is I'm here to try to get a stay of execution, my other joke, I guess, if you want to see it that way. If you pull a rooster out of a flock, the flock gets disorientated, there will be an infrastructure that assigns the pecking order completely. The rooster's been there for over a year and a half. Nobody has seemed to have had a problem with them until recently. So what I am asking, if you could please see it clear that we could have this rooster stay and live at our property until such time as, as natural demise comes along or whatever and maybe make a special effort for him. And he was actually a gift to my niece and she's going to come up and speak in a moment and I'll let her carry that on. And when you watch the dynamics of this animal, he is not really the bird brain that you might think they are. We will give him food and he'll run out there and he'll set it down like he found this and call the hens and have them come and eat. And he'll stand back and let them eat the food. It's very interesting, the whole infrastructure of these birds. I just, I'm amazed. I never had them before and now we're a couple of years into this and they still amaze me on a daily basis. And very comical. And I guess that's basically all I have to say, other than please let us keep our crazy rooster, who basically doesn't make any more noise than a dog in the neighborhood, which is really true, I think, most people will find that. Thank you.
I'm a little short, so, okay. My name's Sierra. I live with my aunt and uncle on Maureen. And I come here on behalf of proposing a few amendments to the ordinance. One would be increasing the maximum of hens to six hens because larger families, four hens would not really provide enough eggs. I know our family constantly has egg shortages because we love eggs and we bake a lot. So that, for larger families than us, and we have only four, I think that would be beneficial. Secondly, I think the 120 feet square footage that, or exceeding that, requiring a building permit would inhibit some coops and hen keepers because runs can be such and such a size that it holds the hens where they're comfortable and 120 feet for six hens might not be very sufficient. And, but my main point, I came here today, is to cleave plemency, as Pierre Rivas put it, for my rooster. My rooster provides a dynamics of the flock, not only in food, character, but he's pretty much the thing that keeps the hens organized and together. He was my birthday present. I would not like my birthday presents taken away, but he's more than a birthday present. He's a living creature who has a strong devotion to his hens and I would like a rooster clause that would promote neighbor relationships by asking a majority of your neighbors within the distance in vicinity of a crow's sound, majority, to consent to a rooster. So many of my neighbors enjoy hearing him. And my sister and I, as I stated previously, went around the neighborhood and collected 63 signatures of my neighbors who are content with a rooster clause. And that is in a one-mile radius of our home. And it's more than just putting a law out for animals, because people like having these animals. It's, it's about our way of life in Placerville. We came up here for foster care reasons and we came from the city, but we were having a hard time adjusting to our new life here. And so we decided in 2014 or 20, yes, 2014, to have hens because one of my friends had a bunch of chickens and they were adorable. Actually, her chickens, so she's cool. Anyways, we started out with three chicks from Clifton and Warren and it takes a lot of devotion on our side to take care of these hens. They needed light and lamps. They needed proper shavings and food, water, constant clean water. And they all have personalities. They're very lovable. They're not as dumb as you would think a chicken would be. They're extremely intelligent. They know when you move something. They know it doesn't disappear just because they can't see it. They're capable of dreaming, so they can understand, understand and interpret their environment. I did a project for Natural Resources at my high school about the benefits of poultry keeping. And one benefit, which is also regarded in the ordinance, is their manure. They nitrogenize the soil and aerate the soil. So I think it'd be beneficial also to allow hen keepers and possibly rooster keepers to utilize that manure and not to restrict the fun it is to have a chicken. It's composting and all those things, it's taught me a lot on how to care for my yard, but also the animals. It develops you, develops people on a whole. It has developed our family. So I would like the commission to consider that in any revisions to the ordinance. And I'll just briefly run them again. Another, more footage for enclosures, so the hens are content without having the pressure of a building permit. A maximum of six hens, the ability to utilize manure and also having a rooster clause on the consent and relationship of your neighbors. So, thank you very much. And I have the 63 signatures.
Yeah. Yeah, Sierra.
Yes.
Again, I'm impressed with the level of preparation you came here with. I, I'm a parent of two daughters who came up through 4H. Poultry projects were hugely important for our younger daughter. All her, all her hens had names. I do want to talk, talk a little bit about, as, as we discuss dimensioning, you know, a hen house, the hen house that you want to build, if you not want to, I won't call it run afoul of, or, but run afoul of...
Yeah.
The permitting process is 119 square feet. That would give each of those hens, if you had six, just shy of 20 square feet, if my calculations are correct. So I can tell you where I work at the state of California, for one human being, they allow space planners, when they're laying out the cubicle walls, lay out between 80 and 100 square feet per human being.
Yeah.
Okay. So my opinion is, is that 20 square feet per hen is generous.
Okay. Could you clarify if the building constraints mean the size contained or just what you used to build?
Well, we, I mean, we, you and I are discussing a, a number of, call it 120 square feet. When you hit the magic number of 120 square feet, you need to get your checkbook out.
Okay.
And that's not to pay for materials. So, so if it's sized for 119 square feet, the mass still holds up as each hen has 20 square feet in that, in that hen house. And one of the things I am a little unclear about is we had both a hen house with nesting boxes and then we had an enclosure made of, you know, one-by-twos and chicken wire. So I don't know, is it, I'll talk to, I'll ask staff later about, about that. But, so, and I can advise you, in the context of this meeting, what the solution is for your leftover rooster is for the near to mid-future.
Yeah.
I, I might have some advice offline, but that's not for in here. And I understand, you know, my wife and I have three indoor cats. A couple of years ago, a couple moved here from upstate New York, about three doors up from us, and they wanted to establish a cattery with 44 cats in their backyard. And they've never forgiven us for objecting to that. So, anyway, in closing, I'd say, if you're in high school, it's not too soon to start thinking about free law.
[laughter]
And I would also just whisper one word in your ear, litigation. Thank you. I can help a little bit here. Thank you. Did you have a question?
I only wanted to commend the young lady on her public speaking abilities and then also your, your activism in terms of getting the petition. So I, I didn't want that to go unrecognized. I thought that was exceptional.
This, this puts me in the position of I have to bring the bad news. We're considering changes to the, the, an ordinance regarding the, the keeping of chickens in residential parcels. We don't have the ability to change state law in the sense of, it's, it's in the California building code. Any structure that's over 120 square feet requires a building permit. End of story, unless the legislature would choose to change that. So, so that's like a different group. You have to go yell at those guys, not us. So, because that 120 square feet, that's irrespective of the use of the building. You can have a building up to 100 and square, 120 square feet. If it doesn't have any power or water, you don't need a permit. So the, you know, that's part of the genesis of the size here. So it allows it to be pretty generous, but we can't here. So if anybody else wants to, has a strong opinion about the size, we're not the ones that can change that. We're just not empowered to do that. And since we do have a lot of speakers, I think we need to limit everybody to three minutes so that we can get everybody in. And for those of you who came in late, first, we're listening to the proponents of the zone change and then we'll, we'll take the opposite side. So any other proponents for it?
Does that three minutes apply to you?
Yeah. No.
And I agree with, with our young lady here, Sierra. And having the building permit, of course, is right. But the chicken coop is just a chicken coop, but the, the yard isn't considered, right? Because you don't have to have very much for the nesting boxes and just to have them come in at night. So that wouldn't be very big. But if you're considering the whole yard where it's fenced in, that shouldn't, that's not included, right?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think that's a great question and we're going to ask staff about that question. I'm, I'm hoping that the 120... I'm, I'm hoping that the hundred and twenty square feet is limited to what you're referring to as the coop nesting boxes. It would not include the outside free-run area, for lack of a better term.
Right, right.
I probably don't have the terms correct. But we'll, we'll have to discuss that with staff, and I believe as the chair indicated, we are bound, uh, this wasn't an arbitrary number on the part of the city, we're, we're bound by current state law. So, we'll, we'll have to come and delve into that. That's a great question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'm glad to see that some of you have had chickens and know about chickens. Makes it a little easier. Wonderful speak, great speaker. I worked at a junior high for twenty-two years, and that was one of the best talks I've heard. Um, I've lived here for thirty-seven years, and probably for thirty-six and a half years, I've had a rooster. And I live in the city, never had a complaint. And, and when we first moved here, we weren't in the city, and our neighbors on two sides decided they wanted to be in the city, and we got sucked in with it. So, but, you know, nobody's ever said anything. We're on two and a half acres, or a little over two, I guess, yeah, two and a fourth acres where we are now. We owned the house next door. It was an acre. We actually had goats there, too, at one time. But anyway, going from the county to the city is a bit of a shock now. No one ever told us we couldn't have chickens or roosters or anything. We knew probably we could, we'd be pushing it with the goats. But my, my thing with the four chickens is the fact that I feed three adults. Four chickens will not feed for three or four adults. It just won't. Especially in this area, your little flyer that you took from San Diego, I'd like to live in San Diego, too, and I would be much happier there in that weather. Chickens do not lay all year long. That said, three hundred, I think, eggs per year. That's a very high number. Those are some really good hens. And my chickens don't lay when it gets around twenty degrees, and they don't lay when it gets about a hundred and one. So, four chickens isn't going to cut it, you know, to feed a family. And that's just eggs in the morning and baking. I mean, that's nothing else. So, I would really ask that you up that number and think realistically, whether you have four chickens or eight chickens, it, it just doesn't make that big a difference. The rooster, like I said, I've had a rooster all these years. He just passed away and, um, of natural causes, and, um, sort of, sort of natural causes. But, um, I've, I've got neighbors behind us, this side, this side, and across the street. Never a word. And Wally could let it go at four AM in the morning. He really could. As he got older, he got better. But no one ever complained, because everybody would say, oh, we live in the country. That's why we moved here. We moved from Santa Cruz, which is just crazy. We moved for the country. Even though we're city, we're still country, and we're farm to fork, or fork to farm, or one, whatever way they want. You know, if you're going to advertise that type of city living, that we really are rural, you need to think about these girls' rooster. I don't think, I've got neighbors that have got dogs. I call them the, um, the hounds, and they go off, you know? And they bark for twenty minutes sometimes when they're upset. I've got a neighbor that I dearly love, but she has a two-year-old. Man, that child's crabby.
I'm sorry, can you sum up for us?
So, you know, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. You know, you've got noises in a neighborhood, you live in the country, you're going to have country noises. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm actually in El Dorado County, unincorporated, um, which Pierre helped me figure out. I was here, talked to you back in September, and we answered quite a few questions. I'm actually a butt right up with City of Placerville, so my neighbor is City of Placerville, and I'm not. Um, just on some of these questions, I was going to address that you talked about maximum size of coop. It could be larger, and you could get into a permitting process if you're going to do a shared-use structure, so if you're going to put them in a barn. The reality of chickens is they only go into a coop to lay an egg and go to sleep. And when they go to sleep, they go right next to each other, so you can put them in a very small area. I think the minimum is good. I don't think you necessarily need to gate a maximum. I think that the, the permitting process will run into that for you. One of the things, and I was looking at a bunch of the different cities around, including City of Sacramento allows chickens, and I, I kind of find that offensive that Placerville doesn't appear in the country and City of Plac, or City of Sacramento can. So, I really hope this time we, we move to allow it. And, you know, so, I have, and, and I, I don't want to do this to this young lady, but I do have a very different opinion on roosters. I have both had roosters and not, and I know they're very nice, and I know they're pets. I don't agree that they're quiet, and we actually got rid of our rooster, and it went to one of my friends. And there's quite a few people that'll take up roosters and rehome them for you. They do wake up very early. They can be loud. There are nice roosters, there are not nice roosters, and you're not going to be able to govern over that. They are very annoying first thing in the morning. That's their job. They do have a job with a, a flock of hens, and that's to be the alpha and the protector. And what we were surprised to find out is when you remove the rooster, an actual hen takes over that thing. And we have an alpha hen now, and we've had two of them, and they will run around and do the same thing that the roosters do. One of the things in the thing I saw in City of Sacramento is that they were requiring the, to keep the chickens inside a coop, and I hope you don't entertain doing such a thing. A chicken doesn't belong in two square feet, or four square feet, or however you long, what they do is they, they get the bugs, and they go out in the yard, and they clean through people's backyards. So, long as they're confined in people's backyards, it really shouldn't matter to anyone around your neighbors. The noise is the same. The effect is the same. And you don't want to take little animals like a cat or a dog and put them in small enclosures either. So, the coop is just where they go to sleep at night, and chickens are, at sunset, they're lights-out, and they don't make a single noise, and then they wake up in the morning. And so, they put themselves to bed, they put themselves into a building. They're very easily trained. They are highly intelligent. I was surprised to find that out. They're a lot like cats and dogs, and they come, and they're pets, and they attach to people. So, those are our eggs. We brought, that's what real chicken eggs look like. My son over there is in high school and did FFA, Future Farmers of America. When we found out that we weren't in City of Placerville, we got more, because all of our neighbors are actually getting eggs from us. We give them to them, and a lot of them wish that they could have chickens, too. So, I really hope that you'll allow City of Placerville limits to please exceed City of Sacramento. We're much better than them. We're live in the lovely country. So, I hope you'll allow that. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to work with Pierre or anyone on different terminology and so forth.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I was looking forward to your return on this topic because of your last presentation. Um, this has been a serious question. Can roosters be debarked?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Um, one of the, um, concerns we have, and we received, uh, some opposition communication, which is fine. Uh, and one of the things they talked about is there's a, a limit on the productivity of the hens laying eggs. Out of eighteen months seems to stand out in my mind. After that, the egg laying falls off. And then, there's a bit of an issue with what to do with the chickens. And so, what, what should people be doing with their chickens? Because if we, if we set a max, and we will set a maximum number of chickens, I'm reasonably certain on that, um, then, then what's, what's going to happen? And what do people do? And I'll direct the question to you, because I think...
And I, it depends, the chickens probably live like seven years on average, and yes, the egg production does drop off dramatically. A lot of people are going to get attached to them, and they're going to keep them around. I have a couple old hens, too, that are just around, because they're, they're like pets. But I don't think you want to get into the business of managing. If you want to know, in the country, a lot of people cull them, or they turn them into stew.
Sure, okay.
And it's no different than going down to Costco and buying a chicken. You have a chicken carcass when you're done. They don't make any noise when you put them out of their misery, and it's actually a humane way if people want to do that.
All right, so, let me ask the question. So, is, is, is that kind of a, because I'm hearing a lot of, um, uh, support for more chickens for, for the egg-laying capability. Obviously, that's a limited period of time, so is it fairly common then for folks then to, to use their chicken for other food supply after the, the egg-laying is done? That's not, that's typical?
Yes. I mean, you have a spring chicken, and you get a spring chicken, and twelve of those fourteen chickens, or actually, ten of the fourteen chickens right there are laying eggs, and they were spring chickens.
Yeah.
It's not abnormal that people will cycle them out at the end of fall and get new spring chickens. They're right. They don't lay them all winter. They lay very poorly. You have to then furnish lights, you have to furnish heating, you have to trick them into expanded daylight if you're going to get even half the production through the winter. They lay eggs in the summer.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions. You just touched on the topic of light and power and heat.
Extension cord. Yeah. And ours is under a hundred, but yeah, I mean...
Okay, so that is, that is something to keep warm. Do they require the light for their, their nesting purposes?
They don't require it.
Okay.
It's only if you're trying to trick their egg production. And I put in the same heaters for the dogs and cats, and so their water doesn't freeze. We plug in their water as well. So, I, we don't actually trick them through the winter, but a lot of people do. So, and that's done with an extension cord, and it's a single light bulb. Sell it to Lee's Feed or Clifton Warren, and it has a metal thing on it, a protection, so you don't catch fire, and it, it's just an extension cord on a timer.
Is it the same sort of situation with water? Is that just something that you do on a daily basis, provide fresh water? Do you run a hose? I mean, what's...
Run a hose.
Okay.
You run a hose, and you can have a, you can either do it by hand, if you have people who are watching them, but, or you can have it on a, the PVC that goes down there, and there's nozzles. Ours is a trough, and so it just refills, because we had larger animals before. But, uh, again, I have the same thing running for cats and other animals, so it, it's not any different for the chickens.
One last quick question. Um, typical age for a rooster, is that approximately the same as a hen, or maybe a little longer, or...
I believe it's about the same.
About the same?
Uh, did she say she had a rooster, the same rooster, for thirty-six years?
It really varies with the breed.
So, apparently, you can have a very old one. So, uh, people get attached to them. There's no, once you have them, people are going to be attached to them. It's about setting up rules that works for neighbors. And I, I don't like barking dogs to be woken up to either. So, I mean, it's, it depends on where you're at and how close your neighbors are, and...
I think I'd sometime rather, uh, trade the clucking of a chicken to the whatever ungodly noise that some of the peacocks make out here. So, anyway, thank you for your input.
Peacock, peacocks make corporal noises.
Thank you.
I wouldn't recommend those.
Could I answer the question about the barking of the rooster?
Go for it.
Um, as far as I know, there is a thing called a crow collar, which muffles the crow so that it's, it can't hardly be heard past your home. Um, I would have to check with, like, the standards they set for that, if like the American Humane Society is okay with that for the roosters. But as far as I know, they're humane and it can help the noise level go down. So, you can like purchase them on like eBay and stuff like that. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Bill Butcher. I live on Cedar Ravine. Uh, as my wife alluded to, uh, I've been homesteading for about forty years. It's kind of a, a circle. The, the manure goes to the vegetables, the vegetables go to the chickens. Uh, we've got several fruit trees. We've got several neighbors that we share our bounty with. Um, I'm, I, I started looking at what could come up at this meeting, and I found your brochures and whatnot, and I scratched out about ninety percent of my notes. I think that, uh, using, San Diego's probably a good, I mean, you can pick and choose what any city's doing to prove your point, but I think that, uh, you know, it's, it's very reasonable that you use that as a model. Uh, the, what, the two things I'm kind of concerned about are, is the minimum of chickens. Uh, the issue, by the way, of the coop, uh, the, the ordinance, as I understand it, for a hundred and twenty square feet is for a building. The coop would be considered the building. Three to four square feet per chicken is plenty adequate, according to all the homestead books I've read and everything I've read. So, I don't think it would ever become an issue that you'd, I mean, you'd exceed the maximum number of chickens before you got the coop needing to be that large. Uh, the, the other thing I'm, I'm, and, and then as far as quantity, there is that lag. You, you get the chicks, it's four to five months before they lay. You've got some older ones tapering off. Uh, so, for chickens, it's hard to do that. And when you've, your kids and, and you've lived with a pet for, we're not commercial. So, when you've lived with a pet for five to seven years, it's hard to say, okay, it's time to go, because we're bringing in the new crew. So, a little flexibility, I, I think, would help. Uh, the other thing that wasn't addressed, we live on two and a quarter acres, and a lot, and there's people, I'm sure they're on a half acre, three-quarters, whatever. And, uh, many of the cities have like one chicken per thousand square feet, or one chicken per eight hundred, eighteen hundred square feet to a maximum. But we live, I mean, you can't see our back from the, from Cedar Ravine. There's a hill that is, you know, unbuildable behind us. Well, our closest neighbor is probably a hundred and, a hundred and fifty feet, and the other ones are further away. So, we kind of sit down, down low, and I think it needs to be addressed that every situation is not completely the same. It's not like we're in a, you know, Kembellic development or something, where, you know, we're close neighbors or whatnot. And, um, so, you know, that's, that, that's the main concern I have is, is the quantity, because for our particular family and purposes and, and cycling things through, you know, uh, you know, a few more chickens would, I think we have the room, we're not going to infringe on anybody. And, uh, in most cities, many cities address that, if you have larger acreage. Any questions?
Thank you. That was three minutes. Good.
My name is Patricia Ford, and I live also on Maureen Drive. And I came from the Bay Area. I've lived here for three years. And I'm kind of disappointed that I can't have what I want now up here in this beautiful Placerville. Um, I wanted to have chickens myself. I don't have them, but I wanted to have them. And I agree with everybody here about the chickens and the rooster, of course, Rupert. So, I'm just kind of disappointed, because I was hoping to have a little bit more of this beautiful country and have what I enjoy. Thank you.
Um, I'm Sophia Meckling, and my chickens are very lovable, and they have great personalities. I used to have a chicken named Ruby Cluckers, also known as Snack Attack. And she had one of the best personalities I've ever seen in a chicken. She would jump to get cherry tomatoes for the other birds and herself, but we lost her, which made an effect to the flock and especially to us. And so, my uncle bought a rooster for my sister and I's birthday. He made a difference in our home, which made us very happy. And if it, as that, the other chicken that we lost, it would kind of just be like that. With us losing a rooster would also make an effect to the flock more than the hen did, and it would make a really big effect to us, because he's one nice bird.
Thank you.
Jonathan Aguilar. Uh, I live on Maureen Drive, about two, two houses down from Rupert the Rooster. And, uh, I'm just here to say that, uh, in regards to the noise, uh, my dogs make probably more noise than I've ever heard Rupert make. And I've woken up more times in the night because of my dogs than I have because of Rupert in the mornings. So, thank you.
Any more proponents for the ordinance? How about any people taking a contrary position? Oh, okay.
Pro-hen Sue Cooper. Um, I've been here, or I've been, um, working with Pierre for about a year and a half on this, so I'm hoping we can get it nailed down. We had to rehome our chickens because of a complaint, so we would love to be able to, um, use our three-quarters of an acre and have some chickens. So, thank you. use our three quarters of an acre and have some chickens, so, thank you.
Anybody else tonight? Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Yolanda Romero. I live at thirty-one ten Sacramento Street. I'm pro chickens, although I have four. We have a family of seven. And I feel that the four chickens are a great contribution to the family in regards to being able to know what we give the feed to the chickens to make it more organic and healthy for the family to eat. When we buy chickens from other people or the stores organic, we truly don't know if they're true organic even though it says organic. We like to know what we give the chickens to eat. They don't make any noise. They pick the bugs and the flies that are around the house. They're good for the garden, which I'm trying to work my green thumb, which so far hasn't been very good, but I'm trying. But I do like the idea of being able to have a maximum amount of chickens, hopefully six, five or six, to accommodate the number of people maybe in your family. And if you do have more, you'd be able to share with your neighbors or your families with the bounty of food or eggs that you get from your chickens. We did move here in two thousand and fourteen from Kern County. We lived up in Tehachapi, which was in the country, they were, we were able to have chickens. We lived in the city, we were also able to have chickens, although I did not. I did look into it because I wanted to get some, but then we decided to move up north back near our home, which was actually Sacramento. But I lived in Camino for a while in my early days and I loved Placerville. We were able to find a place here. I contacted Pierre and asked him about the ordinance because I wanted to make sure that it was okay to have chickens within the city limits. In my research, not only with Bakersfield and having chickens, but I know some friends who lived in LA, the city of LA, who also had chickens. And as long as you kept them within a coop or within the perimeters of your yard and had no complaints from neighbors for roosters, like people have been saying, which I agree, dogs do also make too much noise, maybe more so than roosters, although I would not have a rooster. I'd rather just have the eggs. I don't need more chickens coming, you know, along the way. If I need them, I can probably get them from a feed store or somebody else who may have chicken, little chicks for sale. But I do agree, I am pro chicken, so I would hope you consider all that that everybody said. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call.
I live at twenty-eight eighteen Maureen Drive. And like my wife said, we moved up here from Hayward because our daughters live in Pollock Pines. And we had all intentions of getting chickens. And then we found out there's an ordinance, no chickens in the city limits. So I just, that's all I wanted to say. We were just very disappointed. Thank you.
My name is Myra. I live in two-eight-two-seven Maureen Drive. I just wanted to say, I was from Los Angeles and we actually had, my neighbor next door actually had chickens and a rooster. And they made noise, but it wasn't anything that was a big thing. And I came here happy because I was in a community that was together. It was more quiet, not necessarily quiet, but the community was very together and was there for everybody. And I love the country now. I love the outside and I'm just very disappointed that the chickens are limited in quant, in how many there are. And I, I was very disappointed to hear that my neighbor is facing with the fact that the rooster might be taken away because my dogs make more noise than that. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Oma Akers. I live two-eight-o-seven Maureen Drive. Can't say anything that everyone else hasn't already said, so just want to extend my support for chickens.
He reserves the right to revise his remarks. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion. Oh, we got another one.
I thought you were going to ask for the people who are opposed to it.
Oh, okay. I thought we had run through them. Anybody opposed to this?
Yeah, I was opposed to the idea of having the ordinance that we already have because chickens in this area go back to before the gold rush. In fact, it's when the miners invaded the place that the price of chicken eggs went way up, along with the price of oysters that were understandably very expensive. So they went way up and that's where you got the Hangtown Fry from. So I've had chickens for a long time. We're on a unique situation, different from other people, because our property is divided between the county and the city. Our coops are on the county side, but the chickens go back and forth. I recently lost a chicken, a hen, a beautiful hen, or excuse me, a beautiful rooster, and it was killed by the other rooster. And I feel bad because I was responsible because I knew better than what the city knows. I knew that all chickens are not the same. There's a wide variety of different breeds. They act differently. This was a cochin, very gentle. If you think, Mr. Friend, this is going to keep you up at night, they are all different. The, the, and so if noise is your concern, can you tell me logically why you can't have pheasants? Or, by the way, ducks don't crow. And, you know, your turkeys, they have turkeys that are miniature, they're really small, like the size of a little large one, they don't crow, they don't make the noise. And you've got this silly rule in your ordinance that says that you're going to have to pick up chicken waste and feathers within twenty-four hours and put it in a sealed container. But are you going to have law, these that are supposed to go in some very dirty places? I mean, just to tell you about chickens, they don't have bowels, they don't have bladders, they have, they're omnivores, so their diet changes. If you think you can go around like a little pet bootle and pick stuff up, it's not going to work and that's going to make it look silly. Most of the things in there are. So here's what I'm having a hard time understanding because I'm a slow learner. If you always had chickens available to have in this area, where did it come along that you couldn't have them so that we're now talking about getting an ordinance that permits them? My proposal is you get rid of the ordinance that says you can't have them and then you revert back to what you already have, which is a nuisance rule. Then if Mr. Friend gets waking up in the morning with some noisy guy with his Harley-Davidson wants to go to work at six o'clock in the morning, you've got your nuisance law to take care of it. I agree with everything that's been said, but I would point out that some of them are unique positions. So if Mr. Friend asked, for example, if the chickens can be debarked, Sierra was correct. There's a collar. Because if you look at the rooster when it's crowing, its neck goes up. So there's collars for that. So, and the person who said that they don't, you know, lay eggs in the winter, actually there are ways to do it. I don't recommend it because those of us who have them like to keep them natural, but you can kind of fool them into thinking that the seasons have changed. My proposal is you get rid of it. My mother, I gave her a pair of Chinese red-crested pheasants and it's in an iron parrot cage. Those are illegal, they're in the city. What difference does it make? They have the bright colors of a macaw, but they don't make a sound. So it just doesn't make sense that we're going to have these rules where it's government run amok. I support the work that the staff has done, it's very great, but if you look at those laws, they're all different. Why? Because someone else has done something stupid, should we do the same thing? San Francisco does have a rule, but you can have pigs and you can have, have turkeys. It just doesn't make sense. I will give this to anybody who comes up with the next dumb law in Placerville.
Thank you. Now it's really last call. Anybody else, either for or against?
I'm chicken to be up here, but I'm their aunt and I voted against having the chickens out our house. Now I'm for the chickens because of the years of having them. They're not just chickens, they are pets. And they have really, the girls have grown. They've learned, they're responsible and about feathers, poop, whatever the case is, they have me was always after them to clean it up because, I don't know, I'm not very good at this, but I'm for the chickens. I think chickens should be allowed. And the rooster, he's attacked me twice. But I love that, I love the rooster. And he wouldn't, the chickens wouldn't be what they are without him. And I want to keep the rooster. I want to keep them all, but I'm for, I'm for my nieces to have their birds.
All right, thank you. Anyone else, for or against, or in the middle? Here you go.
Can I ask another question?
Let everybody else talk first and then we'll come back.
My name is Karen Ray. You have a letter from me. I live at nine-one-six Woodpecker Court. I'm not going over the letter. I do petition that you keep the ordinance as is, which provides for people in the city to not have chickens and people in agricultural areas to have agricultural birds. I've lived in Placerville for thirty years. I bought in the city because I didn't want to be in farmland or in the county, out in the county in a rural area. I wanted to be in town. Thank you.
Good evening. Kathy Lishman, Placerville. I know there's a lot of people here tonight that are in favor of chickens and Maureen Drive is very well represented. But your responsibility too is to think of all of the residents of Placerville. We are not a one-size-fits-all town and I, I see this ordinance as not necessarily appropriate in all zones and all neighborhoods. And our lots are different shapes and sizes and our slopes and our terrain varies a lot and what is not an impact in one situation could be an impact in another one. It was mentioned that it depends on how close your neighbors are and I think that's one of the keys of the issue. I'm not convinced, like I said, that chickens should be allowed in all zones. We have a lot of neighborhoods where it may be too great of an impact where people are close together, where there's a slope that, we're not Sacramento where everybody has fences around their property. And I think the size of a lot is important. The setback from any dwelling is not enough. To say in the ordinance that enclosures shall maintain at least twenty feet from any dwelling unit on an adjacent parcel, what if you had a barbecue that was, it's like people wouldn't feel that they could use their entire lot. I think the setback should be based on the person that has the chickens, if you allow chickens, that the setback has to be back from their property line because someone could have a patio or a barbecue or just an area that would be affected by it. I was curious because when I read the ordinance, I thought that perhaps the people that had two and a quarter acres, this ordinance doesn't pertain to them. Because when you look at the second page, it says the exemptions to restrictions and it's any parcel of property zone for agriculture uses or to any property zone to state residential or single-family acre residential zone R1A. So I'm not sure if it would apply to someone, I guess it depends on what that neighborhood zone. But there's a lot of town that's very close together and I think you need to think about them. And then I have to ask the question, who's going to be the chicken cop, which, and will they need a permit? But I think it isn't, it isn't necessarily appropriate in every area. I have nine tenths of an acre. My next-door neighbor has chickens. I didn't know it until she told me. But I'm thinking about other people who might be impacted by chickens being allowed outright in every zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi again. You know, what he said made sense to me about getting rid of the ordinance and then just going for the noise. And just, if someone complains about the noise, do that, but this ordinance is really, really convoluted if you think about it. Thank you.
You only get so many bites at the apple and we've got somebody else. One final question. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I missed this flyer. I didn't see what you were proposing. And I, and I do have a comment on the section H on all hen, chicken, the manure, feces, cens, feathers to be picked up in twenty-four hours. That's not reasonable at all and I'm not even sure you need to do that. I mean, our hens go out and they, and the feces goes into the grass and it just nourishes and it goes away. There is, if there's a smell, you clean out the coop, but you don't clean out the backyard. And I have fourteen chickens and they don't smell, but we have, you know, we have over an acre, so it's going to depend on the area. You're going to keep the coop clean, but it's not within twenty-four hours and I, myself have never picked up a feather nor are they flying around, so I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not sure who came up with that, but that part really needs to be looked at. I can see why it provoked you a bit, so. And reversing is also not a bad idea, so that way it gets you out of being the chicken cops. Anyway, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. Okay, anybody new? Because we're, we're kind of hearing the same information.
I wonder if I have a few seconds here.
You know, I think we get the, in fairness, I think we get the gist of most of the opinions here. We don't seem to be getting new information here. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. So who wants to go first? Are we talking to staff now or?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I have some questions, but I think I need some help start my mind here.
I have a couple of questions for staff. This is kind of a ancillary question, but as far as the, and I don't have this information in front of me, you may not have it either, but as far as the estate residential zoning, what are the acreage parameters or guidelines or what's the smallest RE zone would be and what's the largest it would be?
I believe the largest, or the minimum parcel size in the estate residential zone is, and Mr. Peter can correct me if I misspeak, but I believe it's five acres. And then the minimum parcel size in the R1A, which is basically an estate or a residential one-acre zone, the minimum parcel size is one acre. Now those two residential zones currently allow farm animals. You can have goats, you can have a cow, you can have chickens, you can have roosters by right in those zones. There's no permits. And so maybe some of the speakers could possibly be in one of those zones and on those, if they have larger acreage. And so this ordinance is basically looking at allowing the keeping of chickens in the other single-family residential zones, the R1 zone, the R twenty-thousand acre zone.
So there, are there existing zones that would be one acre that would not be an R1A in the city of Placerville? So same size as an R1A but not zoned as R1A? Or is it automatically you hit that acreage and it becomes that zone? Does that make sense? I can kind of see an argument, say, hey, R1A is allowed currently and it's based on acreage only. Why would, you know, a similarly sized, non-R1A parcel not be allowed that?
I wouldn't necessarily get hung up on the acreage and just, you know, it's interesting when I heard a lot of the speakers talking about different areas. I used to be a planner for Kern County, so I'm very familiar with the city of Bakersfield, city of Tehachapi. My parents live in the city of Los Angeles. My parents live in the city of Los Angeles. My mother used to have chickens in the city of Los Angeles. So I mean, those particular zone districts just are typically your larger lots that then can afford animal husbandry and those kinds of uses where the other residential zones are more suburban and urban. And so you're on closer proximity to your neighbors. Some of the speakers were concerned about the neighbors being very, very close. And so that's why this ordinance is basically, the bar is set rather low. We are only allowing four, four hens. That's, you're really not going to see an impact with four hens. So a lot of the, a lot of the performance standards we put in here, such as just the maintenance and keeping the coop and sanitary, is because for some reason, somebody exceeds the number, they're not maintaining the chicken coop, chicken feces is accumulating and the water is being kept good. You could have odors. It just allows staff the greater ability to go in then and affect a change, do code enforcement and clean up the site. So it makes it a little easier for us. That's the reason why it's in there. These are the codes that seem to be very, very similar in a lot of the other codes that we looked at. Another reason we don't want to tie the number of chickens to acreage is because we want to allow the city to develop. We don't want to create a situation where, say, if you tie the number of chickens to acreage in one of these other zones, then all of a sudden you have somebody with 20 chickens or something of that nature, and then a house gets built next door or a property within the R1 zone gets subdivided. And all of a sudden you have a, an issue of nuisance. And so that's the reason why we do allow, if somebody wants to exceed any of the parameters in the, in the code, they can go through a conditional use permit process. So then it's under the permits, we can look at the individual site and determine, okay, you're on a large lot, but you're zoned R1. Maybe you're next to other acreage that could be subdivided. And so we're going to look at all those different things and try and condition it so that, yes, you can have your 10 or 20 chickens, but you're going to maybe make your setback 50 feet or, you know, or 100 feet, based on the individual conditions. Because we can scrutinize the development of a lot for keeping it chickens based on the particular characteristics of the lot and the characteristics of the neighborhood. So when you look at this code, the bar is set low. It's allowing four chickens by right. And like I say, staff was saying, maybe you could allow five or six. I think you have that flexibility. Because in my experience, you're not really going to see nuisances with that small amount of hens.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
So that, that leads me to, I'll just state an opinion here. I'd be perfectly happy to see an ordinance that allows up to six chickens, so.
Just a question for staff. Rabbits, we, we don't limit rabbits in the city limits? And I ask that from the perspective of concern about disease and other things that fowl might bring. Do we limit rabbits? How many rabbits can you have in the city limits? Is there no prohibition on that? That's an interesting question. It's not really before us. If you're not sure, I'm just curious. I mean, I just remembered as a kid growing up, I had rabbits and, and, you know, there's a lot of mess you've got to clean up with the rabbits, you know? Yeah, we, you know, I think staff would look at rabbits as sort of a pet. You know, somebody has a rabbit hutch in their backyard or in their garage or something, so they put them in at the winter time. We're not regulating rabbits, per se, but if somebody has a rabbit farm and becomes an issue, well, then staff will be able to go in there and affect the code enforcement issue. But really, what's before us now is chickens. I know there was a lot of discussion of ducks and geese and other types of animals. Well, that's not, that's not before us. Staff is not, we haven't had any requests for these other animals. Chickens is something that we repeatedly were running afoul with, if you don't mind me saying. And so that's why this ordinance is before you. And it was, you could read about it in the paper and a lot of different cities were allowing chickens. And so we're addressing the chickens. One other quick question, if I might. On those, the zoning that allows, so you have the RE and the R1A, those that are exempted, is there a limit on the number of chickens? There is not. There's no, okay, there's no limit on those. All right. So I'd be prepared to make a few comments and a motion.
Boy, it's really interesting here, hearing the discussion about roosters. I think, I may not be the only one up here that has all of a sudden discovered what it feels like to be a judge in a capital case, where people are really motivated about their opinion about what you're doing. Because it is interesting that.
Your life's better.
Oh, it's so easy to make jokes, but I'm going to stop. Before we get on to the real serious part of this, it's also occurred to me that this is an interesting situation where what Kathy Lishman was talking about is really resonates with me in that the city's not all the same. Our lots aren't the same. You know, if you look at the physical places where we live, and our lives aren't the same. We all came here to live here for one reason or another. And the reason why someone moved here might be a negative thing to someone else. And this chicken, the chicken issue strikes me that way. Because some people moved here, and we've heard that tonight. Some people moved here because, hey, I'm going to have chickens. And then you get here and we don't have an ordinance. You're not allowed to have chickens. When I moved here, I wanted to have horses. It took me 10 years to outgrow that and get over that because we got horses. But the, we all do live differently. And so that's both the bad news and the good news. The bad news is we can't expect us all to live the same and have the same values in terms of how we live. And where I'm headed with all of this is, I think we're in a situation where we don't want perfection to be the enemy of good. We can't, we can't make everybody happy. There's going to be just as many people that say, and I don't want the chickens. And by the way, let's get rid of the rabbits. My daughter used to have rabbits and I hated rabbits. But I think we need to look at, you know, how do we do the best good for most of our neighbors? We're not going to solve it for everybody one way or the other. But I'm prepared to support this. I think we need to hear a little, have a little more internal debate on the roosters. But I think we can do something here. There's a lot of people that basically have their chickens illegally in the city. There's no way to sugarcoat that. We have a whole lot of people that are going to do it no matter what. That's kind of the history here. The other thing that's been happening is, then that becomes an enforcement issue for the city. Because we have a zoning ordinance that says no, and then everybody goes and does it, and they're saying yes, but the rules are no. And then so the city council, the planning department, they're stuck, you know, kind of looking the other way. And I think we'd be better off as a city focusing a lot of things, on a lot of things other than just this chicken, the chicken ordinance. I don't want to minimize it because it's important. It's important to everybody's lives here. But I think we can find a middle ground here somewhere that will work for most of us most of the time. But I would ask the commission to, maybe we need to have a little more discussion about the roosters. I'm surprised at the impassioned support of the roosters. I'd like to hear a little more about it.
One comment I'd like to make, Mr. Chairman, if I may, before you begin your discussion on the roosters. Just so you're aware, that the current ordinance is fashioned in a way that if somebody really wanted to have a rooster, they do have the ability to apply for a conditional use permit for the keeping of roosters in addition to chickens that are, we're trying to allow by right. So.
Would that conditional use permit, is that done at the ministerial level or does it have to come here?
That would come before the commission.
But so there is an avenue to have roosters?
There is an avenue to have roosters. I just wanted to let you know. You know, and I mean, it's not to sit, because the way the ordinance is written, it doesn't give out a patent prohibition against roosters. They're just not permitted under this code unless approved under a conditional use permit. So maybe you have that person that has, that's living on a larger acreage and a rooster and their coop is far away and the penned area is far away from joining residences. And there's no harm, no foul, again, on having a rooster. So they have an avenue to be able to have that permitted.
In the, in the research that staff did on this, has everybody, anybody ever, any jurisdiction ever come up with a grandfathered rooster clause? I mean, you know, because we can make a motion and all of a sudden we're killing the roosters. It's kind of what it sounds like. Would there be, would there be some appropriate way to do that?
Yeah, the answer is no. What you're referring to is illegal, non-conforming use. And the ordinance is written, we do speak to that. There may be a situation where, say, for example, those residential zones are RE or R1A, if somebody had been keeping chickens and roosters on that property, and then the city turns around and rezones that property, then the keeping of those chickens are illegal, non-conforming use. So what it means is, to be a link, basically to be illegal, non-conforming use, the keeping of chickens had to have been legal at the time there was a code change making it illegal. So what this code is doing is making what is currently illegal, hopefully legal, if they're in conformance with this code. And the reason why I say it that way is, we had a couple of speakers that were saying, oh, we recommend just getting rid of the ordinance. Well, getting rid of the ordinance then is going to make all the chickens out there on all these residential lands, other than if you're zoned R1A or RE, illegal. And I think that's what we're trying to get away from.
Okay, so I don't want to sound too pragmatic, I don't want to sound so pragmatic that I'm getting off the ranch here. But, you know, just like it's true that if you want to have a big party at your house, the first thing you want to do is invite your neighbors. It seems to me that short of, well, I don't see the city borrowing Paul Cockrell's brand-new drone to overfly people's backyards hunting for chickens, especially roosters. So, you know, I'm thinking particularly of a neighborhood like Maureen where there seems to be a great deal of harmony on the topic of the chickens and the odd or occasional rooster. I mean, those lots are, you know, I mean, I live on just as dinky a lot up on Pill Hill. And what you want to do is make friends with your neighbors and cooperate with your neighbors. And I guess my point is, is if, even if you don't have a grandfather rooster clause, because I think we'd be talking about banning and things like that at the end of the day. You know, if you don't attract the attention of code enforcement, maybe some of these roosters can live out their lives, like old mafia dons on the Jersey Shore. And so, again, I'm just suggesting that, you know, everybody knows how well they want to get along with their neighbors, you know. And anyway, enough of me. Mr. Friend?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. A couple of observations. First, from a historical perspective, at least in some of the material that was submitted to us, I think on the opposition side, is that chickens were legislated out of cities in, I'm going to say in the 20s. I couldn't find the reference again while I was sitting up here because of health and safety concerns. So the reason that we went from a agricultural beginning and we had all kinds of animals, including chickens and whatnot, to where we didn't, that happened because of health and safety concerns. So there's kind of a return now to wanting to get back to some of the crafts, whether it's cheesemaking or raising chickens and having eggs and whatnot. So there is some historical context. So for brewing beer, of course. So for those folks that are disappointed that Placerville doesn't allow it, it really, you need to keep it in a historical context. I'm going to speak first to the rooster aspect. Roosters biologically are designed to crow generally very early in the morning. Biologically, that's what they're designed to do. That's what they're supposed to do. Okay? It's far different than a barking dog or a leaf blower or an unmuffler car or a motorcycle or whatever it has. Those are nuisances. And we have ordinances that deal with those kinds of nuisances. So I cannot support the allowance of the rooster by right. It was very interesting to hear staff's position that a conditional use permit could be sought. I didn't get that from the ordinance. And that gives me some measure of comfort that it's not entirely absolute. I wish there was a way to grandfather this one rooster, just this one. If the city could adopt Rupert, if we could adopt Rupert and we could, and that would be the, because if we grandfather roosters, people are going to rush out right now and they're going to get roosters. And then they're all going to be grandfathers. So to me, that's not very practical. The one item that was brought up, Kathy Lishman, I think, brought it up, dealt with the setback. And I, and boy, I missed that originally because I thought, at first I thought 20 feet seemed reasonable to me. But she's right. That really should be 20 feet from property lines. Okay? So regardless of where my patio or my backyard or whatnot is, boy, I'm going to rat out my neighbors because I think they just put in, boy, I'm not going to say what they did. But I know that I sure as heck wouldn't want a rooster in this area where there could theoretically be a chicken coop right next to my bedroom. I just couldn't, couldn't go with that. It just, that wouldn't work. Okay? So I think the 20-foot setback deals with that. I'm comfortable, as Commissioner Lowry indicated, he was, with six hens, okay, up to. And then beyond that, everything is pretty much nuisance-driven. I also would change condition D2H. This does seem to be onerous. And change it to something along the lines, and my language isn't going to be precise, but maintain in a clean, what, I can't even read my writing, in a clean state such that objectional odors, flies, pests and other nuisances are avoided. I mean, I think that's what the intent of that particular section is. I think being so specific about picking it up every 24 hours, we heard from someone who I would consider to be, if not an expert, certainly fairly knowledgeable in this, about, this is not practical to do that. Yeah, if staff may, Mr. Chairman, address that. If the commission were to eliminate H, well, you have that additional language you just spoke to Commissioner Friend under F. Yeah, I think, I think F really does already pretty much deal with that. So I'd be happy striking H altogether. And then just to make sure that we're clear, under D2A, that we, this is totally excluding the open free run area. The 120 square feet is strictly the coop, the resting nesting area, and then it doesn't, it doesn't matter beyond that. With that, I could certainly support this. And I think it's a good direction for the city. And I apologize about the roosters. I just can't bring myself to support a rooster by right. There's a CUP approach. So my motion would be, oh, no, sorry.
It might be helpful to ask a staff question before you do a motion. I was just curious about the, thinking about the setbacks. Are we heading ourselves down a path of unintended consequences here in terms of if we change that setback to 20 feet from a property line because of this, the limited size of a lot of lots, what this could put you in a situation where some of you that have smaller lots, where you might have 25 feet from your, at the rear of your, of your, from your structure to the property line. And if we put in a 20-foot limitation, now you have to put your chickens in your living room. So I'm just kind of curious about what might happen there.
That's a very good question. This was sort of the thinking that staff had. And this is looking at structures under 120 square feet. And as the commission had stated earlier, any structure 120 square feet or greater does require a building permit under the California Building Code. There's nothing we can do about that. That's a requirement. And you'd get a building permit. So mainly, I think, and that was looking at a lot of other ordinances in cities, they seen this stress, making sure that the chicken coop was at least 20 feet from any adjoining residential structure. So based on the fact that you may have odd-shaped lots or topography, we didn't want to be in a situation where a structure less than 120 square feet, for example, you know, a doghouse, can be sitting right on a property line. So we just sort of looked at that with regards to a chicken coop that's, that's under 120 square feet as well, that as long as it's maintaining that 20 square feet distance from a house possibly on a joint.
that 20 square feet distance from a house possibly on a joining property, that they could build right up to the property line. It's the prerogative of the commission if they want to make it more stringent and set a setback from a property line as well. But that was staff's thinking. We wanted to allow greater flexibility in the placement of that chicken coop.
I have a small follow-up to that. Um, the 120-square-foot would be a structure, a building according to our code. And a structure of that size or larger would be required to meet the setback in that zone. So I just want to make sure that's, so that's kind of somewhat different than what Director Voss was talking about. He was referring to structures that might be smaller than that. But if someone were to propose, let's say, a 200-square-foot coop, then that structure would have to meet the setback requirements of the code.
Yes, that, yeah, and if I can just, just a quick follow-up on that. Mr. Painter is absolutely correct. If, if you're great, if you're, if it requires a building permit, then it's going to meet all the minimum setbacks of the zoning code, in addition to meeting a 20-foot setback from an adjoining, uh, property. Um, and again, that's for a structure. So I know there was some, some confusion. There's no confusion on staff's, uh, side and there really shouldn't be as far as enclosure. It does not mean the yard. You don't get a building permit for yard. It'd be only for the structure.
And it also, thank you. It also occurs to me that we're, we're talking about, and I'm bringing up issues that relate to the, sort of the edges of this problem, because most, most of the chicken coops are not going to have a permit. They're not going to meet the threshold for requiring a permit. And if they do, there's other issues too, but for, you know, in terms of the distance between buildings and property lines. So it gets kind of complicated. But that's for the very small percentage of people that are going to end up doing that in terms of permitted coops. So we're not, you know, we're not building in too much of a problem. So I think I could support, uh, the change.
I, I'm also going to submit that, that if we kind of think about this, the coops are used, if I heard correctly, predominantly for, for, for nesting and egg-laying. They're spending most of their time otherwise outside. And that could be anywhere. There, there's no setback issue with that whatsoever. So I, I, I think that, uh, we start arguing over something that really won't have, have much of an impact. And there may be a few places where, gee, just because of the configuration of your lot and whatnot, you, you don't get to have them. That, that, you don't get to have everything. I mean, I, I think the, the exceptions will be fairly minimal. So I, I would move that we, uh, recommend to council that, uh, this ordinance, I don't have, 10-4-18 Keeping of Chickens, be approved, make with the following changes. Uh, let's see, on, on Section B, you, you, there was a little bit different language in the word "subject to the exemptions," Pierre. We talked about that early on when I had asked a question. I can't remember. Permitted in the, permitted in accordance with, or something. But the word "subject" was incorrect. Do you remember? It says, "Roosters are not permitted on any developed lot used exclusively for residential purposes unless subject to the objections, exemptions." And "subject to the exemptions" just seems to be the wrong phraseology.
Well, basically, it's just saying that, um, roosters are not, not permitted unless they're subject to the exemptions under E. And E basically says exemptions to restrictions.
No, I got, I got that.
This section shall not apply. And it, and again, it's those two zones where this ordinance doesn't affect those two zones.
I got it. I guess, um, unless, unless allowed according to the exemptions, I get, I'm just objecting to the word "subject." I'm, I'm not going to make a big deal out of it. I'll let staff work on that. We have four, six hens. So D1 will be six, 120 square feet. We're not going to worry about maximum. We're striking H, right? Altogether. Uh, that would be my motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Call the question with a roll call vote, please.
Member Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Roby?
Aye.
Chair Wolf?
Aye.
Member List?
Aye.
Member Lowry?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and, uh, sharing with us. It's always interesting to kind of see, democracy is really cool. It's hard, but, and not everybody gets to win everything, but it's, it's really kind of fun when it, when it works.
Mr. Chairman, if, if staff can ask for a five-minute recess, please.
Thank you. We're going to take a recess.
And don't forget, the main event is that city council meeting. We have sent a recommendation to city council. So be back in this room.
There'll be a separate hearing at some time in the near future.
Right. Thank you. All right, we're adjourned right now for five minutes.
[music]
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 Annexation takes place between county and then into the city. There's often, the properties are what's called pre-zoned. It's in our sphere of influence. And so the county has set a zone acceptable to the city. To, upon annexation, the city accepts that zone. Then, an applicant or a property owner can decide or request to change the zone. But, it really depends on what it was pre-zoned. It might be pre-zoned to the RE, the five acre minimum, the one acre minimum. It could be anything, really.
Yeah, there was no change made.
But now, if it wasn't and we wanted to go one acre, would we have shot back right now?
So he wants to change it, what do we do now?
Um, whatever it is.
He wants changes from setbacks?
Because we're on two and a quarter.
I thought everybody agreed with, because I know that big remission from setbacks are applying for like a doghouse.
I'm kind of a no.
I agree with you.
I really think of cross-sauce and decentralization is leading us down a really questionable path.
Uh, yeah, I agree.
And I'd really like to see communities like Placerville, we have a lot of hornstutters in here. It really reminds that we could move as a community toward that.
It seems a little scary.
Yeah, you know, because it's really scary.
That's a highly technical term.
All our utilities getting more and more controlled by.
Yeah. Seems like every year, there's something about some sort of scare from lettuce or whatnot from the Salinas Valley.
Yeah, well, none of that is just that, you know, then you get, like, lights the seeds and, I mean, I know, it can get into conspiracy. I don't want to go, I'm not, I'm not there.
That's another discussion.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is.
Well, thanks for your comment tonight. My name's Andrew.
Andrew, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And thanks for participating tonight, yeah.
Okay.
We appreciate your, uh, participating.
No, I gotta say, I just, in fact, I do, I do want to come in and make an appointment sometime. It shows it's still a problem.
Just to go over. There's a series of major.
Exactly, you, so there will be another, there'll maybe another public hearing.
You know, you know a question I have that I might pass on, is daylight, I think, triggers a rooster's response. Do you know, what if he was in a, like, a blackout room? You know, like, black.
I'm sure some animal husbandry type of, uh, school has probably analyzed that.
You know, I mean, I wonder if it's not something that you did.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure they have.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
He wants to see a bird.
You know, because I, I always.
So hot.
On the other two.
Right, right.
So it's, you know.
And then I saw, so I saw your card on, uh, recently, the building around.
We've got, no, we've got it on first.
With my, with my looks on correct.
You're gonna be screwed, but I can.
No, no.
It's a hen?
Yeah.
What last, what's your, what's your view?
Geography, or this?
No, no more birds.
Right, right.
Will the, um, modified proposal be updated on the website or something? For the final?
Yeah, we'll, we'll draft minutes. Those minutes won't be adopted until they next meet, which could be, well, it won't be until August, uh, their August meeting. Uh, so they'll be in draft form, subject to their, kind of what they did, their second action tonight was adopt the minutes from their previous meeting, when that previous meeting was in June, I think it was in June. So, there'll be a lag time when, before they're officially adopted. Uh, but depending, I'm not sure exactly when Pierre's gonna bring this to the council's, uh, discussion. It might be even after, after they meet again. I, I don't know.
Yeah, that would be a question for, for him. I know, he would have to coordinate that with, uh, city manager Morris to get it on the agenda, and it's, and we'd have to publicly notice again, and, and, uh, so, I, I don't know, maybe, uh, I can, we can let you know if you want to, if you want us to call you tomorrow. I, I don't know when it's good, when it's gonna happen. I know he's going on vacation, so.
We're gonna go ahead and re-open the meeting. Uh, if we could ask everybody to go away, or keep quiet, or whatever.
You're welcome.
So, we're, uh, back in order, and, uh, the, uh, I think there's some, a little bit of additional discussion on the action we just took. So I recognize Commissioner Friend.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that there may have been some confusion on the last motion that we, that I made, that we voted on, and I'm going to, uh, request, uh, that we reconsider an action that we just took, and I believe that requires a, a vote, uh, in, in the affirmative to do that.
So, I think, uh...
I would like more information before we do that.
Okay, wait, wait a second, does, uh... Okay, are you making a motion to reconsider?
Yeah, I move that we reconsider the action that we just took.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
In discussion, and I have a question of staff.
I would like to know the foundation before we move on.
Uh, we have a motion to second, so we can have a discussion. In my comments, I mentioned that there, that the issue of the 20-feet setback from any dwelling, I thought was problematic, and it should be a 20-foot setback from a parcel line, from property line. And that did not get carried over into the motion, and I want to make sure that gets carried over into the motion.
Staff would recommend that you, that you would move to just add and consider that item by itself.
That was my plan, thank you, yes.
And I'll, and, and just to give you some additional information, I know staff had provided some explanation as to how we came up with a proposed setback of 20 feet from any adjoining, uh, residential structure on an adjoining parcel. Rather than 20 feet, I would also just put it to the commission, maybe just consider the standard setbacks in the zone district be met.
Uh, which can vary from zone to zone.
Well, I would recommend that, that it would be whichever is greater. So if the setback, so, for example, if you have a 10-foot setback from a property line, and the 20-foot from a, from a residential structure is greater, then it'd be 20 feet and not 10 feet. If you don't have that issue, then it would be a 10 feet from property line.
Not to con-
Rather than 20, rather than 20 feet from the property line.
This, this is in an effort to harmonize with a lot of already existing policy.
Well, staff is just concerned that when you're talking about these chicken coops, some of them are going to be, they're going to be very small. It's like, we don't apply setbacks to, say, a doghouse. Um, and so, for a chicken coop, somebody has four chickens, you're not looking at a very large structure, and so, we just wanted to make sure that it was at least 20 feet away from some house, it could be five feet from a property line. Or sometimes, in an old city like Placerville, you can have a house right on the property line, so we wanted to make sure it's 20 feet away. And so that's why, if, if you are gonna consider modifying or adding an additional setback that maybe you look at, that it would be at least, or, you know, no closer than 20 feet from an adjoining residential structure on a parcel, or meet the minimum setbacks in the zone district, whichever is greater.
So, so I appreciate what staff has, has just said. So the first thing I want to, I want to point out, the reason I view this as different than a doghouse, or a rabbit hutch, and so on and so forth, is that we have an ordinance specifically for the keeping of chickens. So, we have recognized, the city recognized that this is a, a specific, this is different, okay, by, by virtue of the fact that we're, we're talking about this. And we are dictating how many chickens someone can have. In a situation that you've just described, someone theoretically could put their chicken coop right up on the property line to my backyard where I'm doing my barbecue, which I think that was the example that was brought up earlier. And, and it would still be 20 feet away from the dwelling, but it's not 20 feet away from the use of the property. And so I, my motion is to change E, I move that we change D to E to read, that we simply strike, we simply strike, uh, any dwelling unit on, and so it reads, enclosure shall maintain at least 20 feet, oh, I'm sorry, from any adjacent, adjacent parcel. That, that's what I think is, is the simplest. I'll read it again. Enclosure shall maintain at least 20 feet from any adjacent parcel.
If staff could comment, I would just, I would just say then, that enclosure shall maintain at least 20 feet from any property line.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. That's my motion.
Before we go on.
We would need a second for discussion. I'm just, just a point of work.
Yeah, we've got a...
Second.
Okay. All right, now we can discuss it.
Before we move off of E, um, and shall not be visible from a public street, common driveways, is that considered a public street?
Um, staff added that in based on some of the comments from the commission, and I think Commissioner List, you had, you had definitely had some concerns about the visibility of the chicken coops from a, from a public street. That is why we added that underlying sentence in there.
Okay, but my question is, are we seeing just a public street? Are we also seeing any public right-of-way? Like, I, I live on a, um, a common driveway, there's five of us off the driveway. So is that the same thing as a public street in this ordinance? Or is that separate?
Yeah, if that's a private driveway, then it's separate, doesn't apply.
So, what we're saying is that that person with chickens could put that coop up against that, that driveway. They could put it right on their property line because there's a, there's a driveway right there.
Well, under the code now, they could put it right up to the property line, but as suggested, it would have to be 20 feet away from the property line.
They have to have a 20-foot setback from...
20-foot setback. That Commissioner Friend is, is recommending.
Well, there is no public street, so you can't, you can't.
I've, I've got something else to add here. Uh, for a structure that's 120 square feet or more, this gets to, uh, member List's question. For a, an access, what you call is a common driveway, uh, we would treat that in our zoning ordinance, the right-of-way is defined by some sort of recorded document, it's usually an easement, that allows the trespass of those people who use that vehicle or access to get to their property. Uh, we would require the setback that's specified in the zoning from that right-of-way line for a structure 120 square feet or more. Not a structure that's 100 square feet, or the doghouse that was mentioned earlier. Does that, does that help with, kind of clarify?
That's my point.
That's a nuance with, and I want to make sure that's, that's, uh, out there in the public record.
That's my point.
This is not limited to structures of 120 square feet or more. This is any and all enclosures. This, this-
I'm just specifying how the code reads today regarding structures that are 120 square feet or more.
Okay.
And how we would treat a common driveway as a road or an access street.
Okay.
Yes, Ms., um, Mr. Painter is, is correct, but I thought the discussion was on that added section in the second sentence, and shall not be visible from a public street. In other words, you have to, you have to erect a fence so that the coop isn't visible from the public street.
Yeah, I support that.
Separate from the setback issue.
Yeah. Call the question, please. Okay, uh, let's call the question with a roll call vote.
Clarification, uh, was it Vice Chair Robie that made the second? Thank you.
Correct.
And just for clarification now, uh, two, or D to E will read, enclosure shall maintain at least 20 feet from any property line.
Yes. Thank you.
Member Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Robie?
Aye.
Member Lowery?
Aye.
Member List?
Aye.
Chair Wolf? So in summary, both recommendations, since they were both adopted tonight, will move forward to city council. At this point, I don't think we have a date in which that will occur. I was asked that during our break from a member of the public. I don't know if, if the director is, is, has a, has a timeframe as to when that's gonna come forward. But since we're on that topic, maybe it, maybe it's pertinent for those people still, still in the audience tonight.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to item five, matters from planning commissioners. And then item 5.1, a, uh, discussion that I believe that was initiated at my request, uh, regarding planned submittals by licensed professionals for planning commission review. Uh, do we have some staff input?
Well, nothing formal, uh, Chairman. I, I did provide to you the specifically, uh, you know, prior to the meeting, uh, staff did some review of other jurisdictions and how they've addressed this issue as to the professional license of a, uh, a person representing an applicant or themselves for a project that would come before you. And really, the topic matter was, uh, should the city require that site plans, for instance, be prepared by a licensed professional, uh, or, as to show that information relevant to the material that's presented in, to you as for a site plan review or a conditional use permit? If a subdivision map were to come before you, then those are prepared by civil engineers, and, uh, that really goes without saying, you'd actually see a, a, a draw, a graphic and/or maps prepared by those professionals. Um, staff did present to the chair a copy of, uh, page seven of the city of Sacramento's uh, submittal requirements, and there is a section in there regarding design review, historic preservation, policy, and state law. And then right under that, it says, "All plans and specifications submitted to the design director, the design commission, the preservation director, or the preservation commission shall be prepared by a licensed architect, architects, or licensed building designers." They make a caveat after that to exempt, uh, from this rule if such plans were prepared in the performance of the functions of the person presenting the item before you, if they were an engineer, or if they were an architect. Mill Valley, California, has a similar type of language. In Sacramento's example, they did quote and have adopted sections of the State Business and Professions Code, and I believe Chair Wolf brought up that code, uh, maybe not in the specificity of, of the numbers, but, um, as specified on page seven of the Sacramento, city of Sacramento, they've, they've actually adopted, according to the language here I'm reading, they've adopted the Business Professional Code as it relates to the submittal requirements for plans that come before them. Uh, so that really is really the only homework I've done. Uh, as many cities that have this type of requirement, there are as many cities that don't have such a requirement.
Thank you, and just, just for, to share with the, my fellow commissioners, this page seven, uh, uh, submittal that we have, the exceptions, those are the exceptions that are, are part of the, the California, they're included in the California Architects' Practice Act, and also in the Practice Acts for civil engineers and structural engineers and licensed professional engineers. That's, that's pretty common language. That allows, what that does is it allows unlicensed professionals to do A through, 2A through E there, smaller projects, uh, except for multiple dwellings, uh, which sometimes can be commercial projects and kind of in commercial zones, not getting too hung up on the vocabulary.
Or, or a series of multiple dwellings.
Right, yeah.
That's kind of what it's reading.
The, uh, under, or, under certain rules. What my concern about is what we've run into in, in a couple of projects over the years, where you have an unlicensed person designing, doing site work in commercial zones. And, uh, I think a, a recent project is one where there's a reason why, in state law, you have licensed professionals doing everything that's not included in 2A through E here when it's in commercial, commercial zones. Because you have more potential for, you know, there are more life safety issues in addition to just aesthetic issues. And, and in my tenure on the planning commission, I've seen this happen multiple times, where we get drawings and it's either un, for commer, projects in commercial zones, in our downtown commercial, in highway commercial areas, where they're not prepared by licensed professionals. And I'm not just flying the flag of the engineers, or the architects, or whatever, but I, usually you get substandard submittals. We also have had times when we've gotten submittals for projects in commercial zones where it doesn't even say who prepared the, uh, a lot of times, an owner will come in, which they are allowed to do, but they'll come in and you, you have this thing that you know that was prepared, you know, on, in, in a professional office somewhere, and they don't put their name on their plans, which is also a violation of, of the Business and Professions Code. So all I'm suggesting is, is that we start a discussion, uh, in, you know, we have to eventual, eventually decide, who does the staff accept drawings, particularly site plans in commercial zones from?
So, uh, I'm, I'm thinking about this on a couple of axes. Number one is, is that, uh, the most recent experience with this has been part of a project that up to the present moment, has been a project, um, where there's been an unwillingness to confront the requirements head-on and comply with requirements. I'm seeing less than approaching, you know, approaching the requirements and moving through those requirements by either complying with them, or making a, a cogent argument why they don't need to be complied with. So, um, I, I don't want to continue the, the, the situation where we've had a project and we kind of iteratively give the applicant mulligans because we're not squared away. You know what a mulligan is? Okay. And I think that's what, what has happened in this project, the project I'm thinking of right now. So, that, for that reason. But I think more importantly is, we had a drawing submittal that was substandard. Now, at this moment, we have the great good fortune to have someone, a, a member of the planning commission who can make the analysis and identify the shortcomings, shortcomings. That will not always be the case. And so, I mean, I consider myself a rank amateur in this, this discipline. So, I think requiring a licensed person to put their stamp and signature on drawings submitted, certainly for developments in a commercial zone, uh, I don't, uh, I don't see that as being burdensome or onerous. It's part of, it's part of completing a project.
I would hate for us to, uh, make radical changes based upon that, that one particular experience, and, and we had expert testimony from a former planning department director who said that that submittal should never have come to commission in the first place. And, and so it seems to me that that really should have been dealt with at the staff level. So the question I, I would ask is, or, or the observation I would make, is it seems that staff should be making a review as to the adequacy of submittals regardless of, of who developed them. Now, there are clearly, uh, business and professions codes and, and statute or, or regulation that dictate certain levels, and certain things have to have certain levels of review by certain level of profession. That's all well and good, but it doesn't preclude someone who doesn't rise to that, um, that level, uh, from, from submitting. And I think then, it falls to, to city staff to determine, is this adequate, yes or no? And if not, um, it has to go back to the applicant. So I'm, I'm, I'm more cautious than simply implementing, uh, uh, another layer, and I, I respectfully disagree, I, I do think it, it could be absolutely very burdensome, and, and we hear a lot of complaints, particularly in the county, about how expensive it is to do anything because of all the different layers and the fees that go along with it. So if, if, if the result, if an adequate product can be developed, and, and I would presume that staff is, is, is the expert in determining, is this, is this adequate or not, then, then it should, we shouldn't have to impose an additional layer. That's my thoughts.
So, okay, I, then my question to staff is, does anybody on staff represent themselves as registered professional engineers in the civil, mechanical, or architectural domains in this state? Who does a review? I mean, I, um, it's all well and good to say, well, staff should, you know, should take care of it and complete its staff work, it's something I'm a little sensitive to. But, um, uh, at some point, um, somebody has to catch, somebody has to pick the fly specks out of the horse manure on these things. And, I'm not comfortable asking someone who does not, uh, have the, uh, professional credentials and training, and whatever amounts to malpractice insurance, um, to protect them, uh, when being asked to make these, I don't think it's fair to ask planning commission or planners to make evaluations of engineering drawings. I guess that's it in a nutshell. Uh, to way back in, I share the same goal in terms of, you know, I, the last thing I want to do is make it harder for applicants, uh, the, uh, and more onerous in terms of cost and time. On the other hand, I, I think we need to support the staff in, if, if we do require a licensed professional to be involved in site planning at commercial projects, that's a, that's a hurdle that has to get jumped first, before the staff is put in the position of, well, here's something, and now they really have to, they have to go through it with a fine-toothed comb, just to determine if it's a complete submittal. It's usually a pretty good bet, I mean, there's always some outliers, but, uh, when a package comes in and you, and you flip through the drawings, it's coming across the counter, and I've done this when I used to work at the county, you know, you, okay, here's the stack of structural engineering, it's signed by the engineer, oh, it's a, here's the, uh, the architectural plans, they're signed by the architect. Uh, if you look, and there's no structural engineering stamp, and you look, and you go, oh, well, they signed on the, also signed on the architect sheets, you have a pretty good bet that it, because someone has a license on the line in their profession, that it's at a kind of a higher level. And I think their recent experience with this other project is one where we'd have saved tons of money, time, and effort, and, and spirit for everyone if the minimum professional requirements were met. And, w, when you get right down to it, at least, I'm talking about site planning at this point. I think, uh, uh, an unlicensed owner of a commercial project can come in and be trying to get, uh, a site plan review or something for a smaller project, and, and they can go for it. But when, when you're talking about site plans in commercial zones, I mean, we're really lucky that this, that, that, the problem, the project that we had such trouble with didn't include an encroachment. I mean, uh, because there's a lot of documentation and drawing that you have to do, and I wasn't, wouldn't have been comfortable. So I, I don't think that we're kind of throwing out the baby with the bathwater to just simply require, uh, that licensed professionals do site planning in commercial zones.
I've got to chime in, the, the earlier comment, and we, we're not mentioning the, the project and its specificity, but, for the record, um, and it is part of the record for that project, that staff did inform the applicant of the incomplete nature of their submittal. It was after discussion with the applicant that staff was told to, uh, the intent of the applicant was what they submitted, and that's what they wanted to present to this, this body. So, staff did analyze that particular project, um, and we do with every project that comes in. We can share, I think, to the public that we've rejected the application of the hotel project that's been submitted reg, at, on Jake Way Road. It's, it's incomplete. It's not, there's not enough detail. We had to kick it back to their design professionals to come forward. So, in this case, we did make an effort. The applicant has the right to submit what they want to submit for you to consider. Staff, uh, took that information and came up with a, uh, conditional approval that has some, as we know now, is moot because the applicant has resubmitted their application. We're going through the process of evaluating that, and that item will come to you, uh, in August. So, um, I just want to make sure that that, that doesn't go, uh, unheard by, by this body, and I wanted to, to present that to you.
Is this a, a requirement that I'm, I'm suggesting, is this something that has to be, can be done at a ministerial staff level, or does this require, uh, pomp and circumstance here?
I can address that. Um, the code section escapes me, but it's in the section of the zoning ordinance that describes your role, you, the planning commission. Again, I'm not looking at the language, but the language allows you to, uh, make requirements of applicants for projects that you have the authority to, to consider. So what staff interprets from that language is that, yes, you would have the right to request, uh, certain items and how they're submitted to you for your, for your review and, and consideration.
If I understand that correctly, then we can do this on a case-by-case basis. If we feel the submission is inadequate and requires a professional licensed architect or design engineer, we can say, you know what, you're going to resubmit this with that, as opposed to making a blanket approach. That's what I'm hearing.
I think the blanket, if, I'll respond to that. Don't we want to provide the community, similar to what we've done with the development guide, as a roadmap for what needs to be submitted for your consideration or City Council's consideration? So I think the blanket approach might be the best for the overall submitting professional applicant or their agent. I guess that would be my argument against the case-by-case basis. Was that clear? I guess I may be in... I guess my argument is having a specified number of copies submitted, elevations, you want to see color palette, you want to see materials board, you want to see those types of things. I don't believe this body's ever really been involved with a workshop to develop that. It existed when I first was employed here, so I'm assuming that maybe planning commission back in the 80s may have contributed to that dynamic. I don't know the history of it. But I think the holistic approach might be best suited for our development community if they know in writing what they need to submit to you all, whether or not it's a professional design plan for a commercial property or whether it's the homeowner in a historic district that just wants to change out their windows.
Right, you know, I don't want to create undue burdens on the, you know, the owner builder. Right? But, you know, there's some cases where, you know, flat plot of land, no issues about soil compaction, going to porous slab, stick build a two-bedroom house, you know, and they, I mean, my father-in-law, my father, and my grandfather have all designed their own homes and built them, okay? One of those happened to be a professional civil engineer. But so I don't know that we can, you know, draw this bright line that says, well, commercial has to be held to, you know, you have to have nothing but stamps and signatures and all bets are off in residential developments. I just, you know, there's a, there are, there are, there's a very small, narrow domain of things I know a lot about, and there's this huge 359.95 degrees of things I know nothing about. And I just don't want to see us making decisions that put the city on the hook for unhappy outcomes because we made a decision out of ignorance. Is that too risk averse for you?
Probably the worst project that I have seen since I have been on this, this board is the senior housing project. Licensed architect stood here and told me that's the best work he did. And it was pathetic. A license doesn't guarantee anything. I agree, I agree that when you're talking about site development, I think we do need to bring in the professional. And especially on commercial. It was quite obvious. We had questions about, you know, getting buses in and out of there, and it was like, what are you worried about? I took care of that, you know, I'm the professional, I took care of that. And it wasn't. And I still don't think it was fully to our satisfaction that that was taken care of. You know, I about went ballistic not long ago when the state of California came down with the edict that you had to be a licensed landscape architect or a licensed landscape designer on new residential to put a sprinkler system in your property. That's ludicrous. That's nothing more than a full employment act for licensed landscape architects. Yet here we are. Away from that, back to what we're talking about, I do see the need for the professional license when you're talking about the site development portion of that.
In some of my review of other jurisdictions, and I'm sorry, I don't have the name of the one I'm thinking about at this particular moment. But they parsed in their submittal requirements that if a project involved a civil description, let's say a grading was necessary for the development project, they required, that jurisdiction required that, at a minimum, that sheet must be prepared by a civil engineer. And to assure, and I'll leave the comments raised by Chair Wolf regarding that previous project we were talking about earlier, and having real-world monumentation or knowledge of the slope, the elevations, the grade, et cetera. So there have been some jurisdictions that have kind of parsed that out where, yeah, they may allow a designer to give you an elevation of what that new fascia on that commercial building may look like. But if the construction involves some sort of physical improvement to the lot, that that government wanted their decision-making body to have a clear understanding stamped by a professional that what you are seeing is actually out there in the real world and shown on the graphic or map.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have any specific action on Item B4 tonight. Is there some way to draw this to a conclusion, provide direction, or?
Sure, I was, you know, I asked it to be agendized so that we could discuss it. And I think, I'd like to move forward on a request and so, you know, that we consider this more. And so how does that work? Now, we've noticed it as another, we can work, I'll make a proposal. We bring, we agendize it, do the public notice, and then we come back and discuss it. Is that the process? We're talking about a change to our...
The code...
It's a chicken coop, it's a chicken coop thing.
Yeah.
It's a chicken thing, right? It's a chicken thing. So staff brought to us a proposed, ordinance may not be the right vehicle, but...
That's kind of what I'm getting to. I'm trying to remember the animal, the driver, the mechanism that you would need to do in order to impose a particular requirement. I know in some sections of the code, it requires a resolution adopted by this body. I don't remember that language being in there. You could probably do it by minute order and just direct staff to ensure that applications have X, Y, and Z as it relates to a specific type of improvement. Maybe that's the best way to handle it. But yes, we should do that at a public hearing and hear from the public.
And perhaps the recommendation is for staff to do some research on this to figure out what the best mechanism would be.
And then I think it would be good to make sure I'm not creating a tempest in a teapot and have a public hearing and see what pops up. All right. Any other matters from staff for us to consider tonight?
Yeah, a couple of things. The August 2 meeting, we will not be here. Or you could be here, but there'll be no meeting. It's national night out. So we typically go silent on that evening to allow you all to enjoy your neighborhood festivities. Also, the next planning commission meeting will be August 16. So your second meeting in August will be heard, and there will be two items on that agenda. The first, well, the order of which we haven't decided yet, but one of them will be the 618 Main Street Parking Lot Project. And the second will be a, some code amendments that Director Rivas will bring forward regarding sidewalk dining within commercial areas here in the city.
I thought we did that. Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
By acclamation, we'll adjourn. Good meeting. Good motion there, Mr. Friend.